Please and thank you.
Thank you, worship. So we just added a little section to our agenda, our council meeting agenda here, just wanting to make sure the public is aware of the reason why we're doing Zoom. Again, we've tried to make it very clear, but just ensuring that people understand that they can watch this meeting through Rogers, which is being streamed live on channel 53. It's also being streamed live on their on their website, and you can simply search Rogers Penetang Machine, and you can find our live stream there. You can also call in through our Zoom if you send a request to myself, we can have it so that you're listening to our council meeting live through your telephone if you don't have television or internet. And also, we have it streaming on our YouTube channel. It will be usually uploaded the next day, so you can watch a meeting lot that's happened a day or two before. If there's any questions that happen, I understand if there's a question, we have a question period in both our council meetings and in our committee of the whole meeting. If there's ever any questions, we suggest that emails be sent to myself, requesting a question be read, it would be read, and would hopefully be answered, or if not, be followed up with staff for response. And any questions that are received would be attached to the agenda after the fact. And accessible accommodations also can be made if necessary, just by emailing myself, the clerk at askcooper@penetangmachine.ca, or by calling our office at 705-549-7453. And also, you always have every opportunity to speak to all of our members of council. If there's ever a chance, we have their phone numbers and emails listed on our website, and you can also call that same number that I just listed and ask to get to a message, a message to them, and we'd be happy to pass any messages along. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you take over.
Doug, I think you're muted.
We're used to these things. Here we go. Okay, again, council and public welcome to our regular council meeting of Wednesday night, August 12. And I will start with reading our council commitment for the town of Penetang Machine. So we are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penetang Machine and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as members of council be enlightened, and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will, and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all, and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you. So we will move on to approval of the agenda and the regular council, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of August 12, 2020, be approved as presented. A mover and a second, please. Then councillor LaRose and councillor Sainama, all in favor. Thank you. Moving on then to declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone has, so be it, and if not, appropriate time, moving of the special council June 30, 2020, council June 8, 2020, committee of the whole, June 8, 2020, and special counsel, June 8, 2020, and that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted as circulated. Mover, deputy mayor and secondor councillor LaRose, all in favor. Thank you. Then moving on to our consent agenda, of which we have none, and then we move on to matters for consideration, and that is the 2020 year-to-date financial summary and overview of COVID-19 financial impacts, update number five. FN 2020-16, that the report, FI 2020-16, year-to-date financial summary and overview of COVID-19 financial impacts, update number five, be received for information, and that financial relief measures as outlined in option number one be approved. I have a mover. Councillor Vadevalkar, secondor, councillor Sainama, all in favor. Thank you. Moving on to B 2021 budget timeline report, that the 2021 budget timeline be approved as presented. Mover. Deputy mayor, secondor councillor Sainama, all in favor. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments here? Councillor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to to comment that with respect to the timelines outlined in the report, you'll see that the consideration of the budget is being pushed out until 2021, early 2021. So at our section meeting, we did have a conversation about this, and my understanding is that it's a result of some delays early in the process in terms of getting information out, getting our survey out to the residents with respect to the budget process. We should have most of our process wrapped up in 2020, but there are the final steps that will take us into 2021. So it's an unusual year, and as a result, we're now into 2021 for the final consideration of our budget. So I just wanted to highlight that point. Thank you.
Very good, councillor Vadevalkar, and that is exactly the problem. It was just, you know, time to realize what the financials were going to be, and then with the COVID, and then the else that was taking place, the pandemic. So I think we're still going to be in rather good shape and have it an early year. I know and realize that majority of the municipalities will certainly not be seeing their final budgets till spring of 21. And so we'd be shooting for early February, hopefully, and that, to me, is still going well. So thank you for that. We move on to the next item, which is the Great Lakes water level request for support from Teah township. And there's a lot of wheras's here. So bear with me. The Great Lakes water level request for support from Teah township, whereas the town of Penetang Machine borders the southeastern shores of Georgian Bay on the Great Lakes of Lake Huron and Lake Michigan Basin, and whereas the volume and height of Lake Huron and Lake Michigan Basin has set unprecedented lows and highs from 2012 to 2020 over six feet, and whereas the high water is causing significant shoreline erosion, flooding areas, extensive property damage to personal and municipal infrastructure, and further impacting wetlands, ecosystems, and fish habitats. Now, therefore, the township of Teah seeks the Ontario Provincial Government and the Government of Canada to intervene with the International Joint Commission to better manage and control the lake levels as set out within the IJC mission statement, and further that the IJC take immediate action to lower the level of the lakes to within a manageable average mean of each Great Lake, and further that this resolution be forwarded to the approximately 50 municipalities and 25 indigenous communities that work for Lake Huron and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario for support. I have a mover on that. Deputy mayor, and seconded by councillor Sainama, all in favor. Thank you. So now we move on to amend procedure bylaw, authorize electronic participation of council local boards and committees of council, Bill 197 CL 2020-06, and that the bylaw amending the procedures bylaw to allow for electronic participation be presented to council for consideration, and that the meeting schedule for regular council and committee of the whole be amended to be once per month, being the second Wednesday of September, October, November, and December 2020. Mover. Councillor Vadevalkar, secondor councillor LaRose. Questions, comments, or concerns? Councillor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, worship. So again, we talked about this report at section, and I fully understand the rationale behind the recommendations, and I do support most of the recommendations that are in the report. The only the only concern I have is the recommendation with respect to continuing with electronic meetings until December. I really, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that, per se, but my only comment would be that I'd like, if I could get a secondor to potentially amend the motion, if the clerk feels, well, she can ask or tell us if it's appropriate to have a motion on this, but to to conduct a review in October. Things have changed quickly with respect to COVID over the last few months. We may know more in October. We're committing ourselves to electronic meetings until December. So I just thought that perhaps some midpoint between now and December, we could undertake a further review, see if it's appropriate to continue with like electronic meetings, or move to some other format. So I'll just put that out there, and maybe that might generate some discussion. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, councillor Vadevalkar. And we'd have to check with the clerk on that possibility, but I still have to say, on the other hand, I know where you're coming from, and I understand, but at the same time, we have to understand that we have a very difficult situation or position in accomplishing this. It's certainly not something that we could accomplish in our own council chambers, being that we have to do the social distancing. If you consider by the time you put in nine members of council, the clerk and the CAO, there's not much room there for any staff. And then the other alternative to it is consideration of possibly moving our council meetings elsewhere, for example, by North Sir Hall, but then we get into a bunch of staffing and monetary costs and stuff. So anyway, I would leave it to the clerk to comment.
I'll only take the opportunity to comment before councillor LaRose and councillor Levy, just because I just want to make it clear. The motion that's up for today isn't isn't to decide that we're going to do electronic meetings for those three months. When you read the motion, it's actually specifically, we're requesting that we only have this meeting monthly. Like, that's where it says, we're amending the meetings, so that we're having the meetings monthly. And the procedural bylaw is now allowing us to have electronic meetings outside of the declared emergency. That being said, I'm not suggesting in any way that I think we should now all get together in the same room. That's not what the report says. But in terms of the motion, the motion is specifically allowing for our procedural bylaw to add that new amendment to the, based on the municipal act changes, to allow for electronic meetings regardless of an emergency situation, and then also allowing, again, again, council agreeing to one meeting per month. And if I hear if I hear direction today, and it could happen even in the committee of the whole section, where maybe there's direction to staff to look into other options, if that if that's what councillor Vadevalkar is suggesting, but that that doesn't fall under this report necessarily, because the motion is specifically about the bylaw allowing us for electronic participation and us having the meetings once per month.
Councillor Vadevalkar, did you have further comment on it?
Yeah, and I'm just to the clerk's comment, I'm happy to raise this again in committee of the whole. My only intent was that there be some mechanism built into doing a review in October of our current arrangement with respect to meeting electronically. That was my only intent. I fully understand the recommendation. I support the recommendation. It was just an opportunity to to raise the question about having a review done in in October, and I'm happy to do that in committee of the whole. Thank you.
So we'll leave that to committee of the whole. That's fine. Councillor Levy. Councillor Levy, you have.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned that one, once a month, isn't enough to get the work done and get approvals and whatnot. I'd like to see us go to twice a month, but if there's no appetite for that, then there isn't the appetite. Thank you.
Again, thank you, councillor Levy. And certainly, if there was a need to have additional meeting, that council would have to be called in, we would certainly call it. Right now, again, because of the pandemic and COVID, there are a lot of issues and concerns and things that are not being done or being accomplished, the projects that are not moving, projects that are not getting done or moving along, so that we feel that we can get by with the one meeting per month. If we see again by October, whatever, November, that the requirement for more meetings will be there, you might have noted that there are going to be some special meetings come fall in regards to the budget over and above our regular council meetings. So for the time being, I think that if if council is good with it, we stay with the one per month, and we we review it as we go. Okay, moving on to E arena.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry to interrupt your worship. I do have a mover and a secondor, but I didn't.
Okay, all in favor. Good, thank you. So the arena dehumidifier repair, that $11,092 of the capital budget set aside for dressing room and concession stand upgrades for the arena be used to complete the necessary repairs to the arena dehumidifier as outlined in the staff report. Mover. Councillor Sainama and secondor councillor LaRose. Okay, are there questions or concerns on this item? Councillor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, worship. Just to councillor Rose, is there, I see the time period to have the repairs done. Is there a mechanism or a way that we could move this along quickly in terms of getting the repairs done, so that we'd be in a position to consider opening the arena?
Thank you. That was the whole point. We had our section meeting early this week, and I advised the director, and she contacted the clerk, and they were able to put it on our council agenda, which was going to save us a whole month. The purpose of this tonight is that we basically have to decide if we're going to have ice or not have ice. And if we're going to have ice at some point, we need to approve this tonight to to move our timeline up by one month, which would at least give us a chance at, you know, having some sort of a season. I'm sure you all received information from the PMHA and on what they want to do, but we we had never had the meeting to decide whether we were going to have ice or not have ice. But by doing this tonight, and if we agree to fund these repairs, that would be five or six weeks from tonight, as opposed to waiting next month for the approval at council time.
Now. And we know that that it's it's a necessity to begin with, that we're going to have ice, that this dehumidifier cost to purchase be done, and something that has to be done along the line. I know that if we were told that it's what, going to four to five weeks to getting the parts, which would bring us into towards the the end of September, or possibility of the end of September, which would be a norm for a lot of them, or even a lot of the arenas that are. Some are open now, some are opening gradually, and some are not going to open at all. So if we're going to look at it and then see whatever else there is, we do know at this point in time, even with minor hockey, there's going to be more cost than income, for sure. So it's it's a question. So first of all, we have to deal with whether or not we approve this dehumidifier. Councillor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, worship, and I certainly appreciate sections' action on this to move it from the committee of the whole agenda to the council agenda, so council could deal with it tonight. And I'm very supportive of moving forward with with the recommendation. My only question was if if council supports this and simple ice gets the contract, is if there's a way that we could, we could try to expedite this. But obviously, it's waiting on parts and everything else, but five weeks is five weeks. And if there's anything we can do to move it along, then that's great. That was my only point, and I appreciate the work done to date.
Mr. CAO, give me a comment on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add on to councillor Rose's comments, just, and our director of rec may have some further comments, just to shed some light for council. But a couple of things, I guess, that I wanted to raise. One, as councillor Rose spoke to, at some point, presumably, council will decide to put the ice in. Staff will be bringing a report forward. The intention is that staff is bringing a report forward on September 9, with some options and a recommendation with respect to timing of putting the ice in. So our recommendation from a staff level is, as councillor Rose spoke to, is to get the dehumidifier repaired kind of now, because at the end of the day, it will be required, presumably at some point down the road. And certainly, staff will expedite as much as we can, the timing of install, but certainly the indication we were given was the five-week range as identified in the report. Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow, I'm not sure if our director of rec has any further information to add, but I'll leave that up to you if if she does have anything further to add.
Good. Thank you, Mr. CAO. Sherry, do you have anything that you would add to this?
Nothing to add. Just there'll be another report coming to to council as the CAO spoke to. This will just position us better to pull the trigger if council provides direction to put the ice, put the ice in.
Okay, thank you. So with that, do we, we do have a mover and a secondor on proceeding with this purchase. So all in favor. Good, thank you. Gary. So now we move on to presentation and consideration of reports, committee of the whole. So committee of the whole report, August 12, 2020, that the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Recreation and Community Services section be approved. Mover. Councillor Rose, councillor Sainama. Has anyone wished to pull anything from this? If not, thank you. That the recommendations contained with committee of the whole report related to the Planning and Development Service section be approved. Mover, secondor, deputy mayor and councillor Clu, all in favor. Thank you. That the recommendations contained with committee of the whole report related to Transportation, Environment, Service section be approved. Mover. I believe councillor Levy would have to do that one, and seconded by councillor LaRose. All in favor. That the recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Finance and Corporate Services section be approved. Mover, councillor Vadevalkar, secondor councillor LaRose, all in favor. Thank you. Presentation and consideration of report to special committees, where there are none, motions of which notice has been previously given, there are none, notices of motion, there are none, and consideration of bylaws, and the bylaws are 2020-34 being a bylaw to designate a community improvement plan project area, 2020-35 being a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan, 2020-36 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2000-02, as amended of the Corporation of the Town of Penetang Machine, 1145 Fuller Avenue, and 2020-37, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2019-25, being a bylaw to govern the proceedings, the proceedings of council and committees procedure manual for council committees, and to repeal bylaw 2020-16 and 2021. And that council of the town of Penetang introduces the following bylaws, 2020-34, 2020-35, 2020-36, 2020-37, and the bylaws be read a first time and deemed to be read a second and third time and carried. Mover. Councillor Vadevalkar, seconded by councillor Clu, all in favor. That is Gary. Thank you. Does anyone have any announcements or inquiries? Councillor Sainama.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Thank you. Got it. I just wanted to make an announcement today at the Penetang Machine Public Library. We did have a reciprocal, a reciprocal agreement has been made with the town of Midland, so that the residents of Midland can use our our library facilities. So it was a very, a very exciting announcement to have made. More more cooperation between the municipalities. So that's very good.
Yeah, it was well done, well attended, and nice, nice reception, that's for sure. Was there anyone else who had an announcement or inquiry? Councillor Vadevalkar.
Thank you, worship. My question is for the Director of Public Works, and it has to do with the multipurpose trail along County Road 92. I was just wondering if you could give an update on the trail. When I drive by there on a regular basis, I don't see much activity. So I was just curious where we're at with that, and if you could just provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you, brew, your worship to councillor Vadevalkar. I'll be attending a construction meeting tomorrow to get a new update on the on the project. But as of the last meeting I attended a few weeks ago, they're still working on the east, east side of the culvert. They were waiting on a price from the contractor to install a ditch in that catch basin to address some of the erosion that's been happening along the embankments on Murray Road that wasn't included in the original design. So they were waiting a little bit for a quotation, and then now a delivery of the actual materials on site. That's to be installed shortly here by Celia Arnell. And that was what was holding up the actual trail construction going up the hill to to Murray Road. So once the east portion of the culvert is completed, they were anticipating to have it done by the end of this week. And at that point, the traffic control and staging will be switched and flipping the traffic on the other side of the road, so that they can begin on the western portion of the culvert, which they're anticipating to be done by the end of the month, to early September, and looking to have paving completed and the trail and retaining wall construction completed by the end of September. Again, I'll have a better idea of timing tomorrow, once I attend that construction meeting, but that is the latest information that I've received to date.
Thank you.
Perhaps, perhaps, Brian, you could possibly email members of council with whatever comes up at your meeting tomorrow, advise us, and let us know what is happening and whatnot from your meeting. And I do, I did hear you say paving earlier, so I think councillor Levy mentioned something about it being concrete, but you're saying paving.
Yes, it'll be asphalt paving.
Councillor Levy, found a yellow card. Did you have a question or concern, or was it in regards to the concrete and asphalt? Okay, all right. Confirmation bylaw then? Oh, councillor Sainama.
Thank you, your worship. I did want to just also mention about last week, the, we did, we, Jeff, Jeff believes the CAO and I, we had been invited to attend the sneak peek opening of the Georgian Bay Cancer Support Center. And it was, it was, actually, it was very, it was a very moving event. The Support Center is certainly very appreciative of the land that the town has, did donate for their, for their project, and and certainly very appreciative of all the donors up to date. I think there, I think their initial, if I remember the numbers correctly, their initial fundraising efforts were for 1.7, or 1.7 was the cost they raised. There was a couple of adjustments, so it went up to 1.9. Fundraising efforts are at 1.8. So they're about 100,000 short. So they are, but they're still doing extremely well, and the the facility is, looks fabulous. So we should be very proud of having that facility here in in Penetang Machine.
Yes, it is. It is a beautiful building, actually, and the grounds and the whole thing. And we are. We are fortunate, actually, in having something like that within our community. And you're talking, Counselor Sanama, about the fundraising. I saw just on the email today about Psycho Camelot they're doing virtually. And I did promise you, Counselor Clu, that I would support you in your, in your pencil camelot drive. And saw today that they were striving for $80,000 and that they were actually now at 40,000. So they're moving along well with their fundraising. While we're on that subject of the cancer support center and the beautiful building and what it does and promotes for our municipality and surrounding area is that we received word of a very, well, actually a cousin of Jenny's that passed away at Tompkins Home here in Penetang Waseen. And so again, that's another home that we're so fortunate to have within our municipality and the great work. The wife contacted us and said how well he was taken care of at that home. So two kudos for Penetang Waseen. Do we have any further announcements or no? So with that, I will read the confirmation bylaw 2020-38. That confirmation bylaw 2020-38 is signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover. Counselor LaRose, seconded, Counselor Sanama, all in favor? And a motion to adjourn, I only need one, Deputy Mayor, we are adjourned. Now with that, we'll jump right into committee of the whole. So committee of the whole electronic meeting Wednesday, August 12, 2020. And we called order and approval of the agenda for committee of the whole agenda, August 12, 2020. Recommended action that the committee of a whole agenda for August 12, 2020 be approved as presented. Mover. Counselor LaRose, seconder. Counselor Sanama, all in favor? Gary, thank you. Declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has, so do, and if not, at the appropriate time. Presentation and delegations, all sections, we have none. Council information package, council information package, August 12, 2020. Recommended action that the council information package dated August 12, 2020 having been given due consideration be received for information. Any questions or concerns or anybody want to pull anything from this? Counselor Vatavonkhar?
Thank you, worship. I'd just like to speak to the letter from the Penetang Kings, if I may, in the package there. I'd just like to, if it would be possible to have that letter under request referred to staff for review and report. If that could be considered, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Perhaps, yes, we could review, refer that to staff and to section for review and maybe further report sometime, maybe at the council meeting, September 9th, the report could be given in regards to that. Are we good with that?
Thank you, worship. I'll raise it at the appropriate time to get it on one of those, the unfinished business aspects. I'll raise it under Finance and Corporate Services at that time.
That's fine, thank you. Okay, so moving on then to section A, Transportation and Environment Services. So pass that on to Counselor Levy. Okay, Counselor Levy, yeah. You're on mute, Counselor Levy.
Hold on.
There you go.
Okay, ducky. Okay, starting with the consent agenda, we have none, no items. And then the next item is matters for consideration. Transit bus stop advertising agreement R D S 2020-20. Recommended action that council approved bid number one received from Creative Outdoor Advertising for the supply of advertising, installation and maintenance of transit bus benches at the locations outlined within the staff report contingent upon receipt of all required R F P documents. And that council entered to, into a three-year agreement with the option to renew for an additional two years with Creative Outdoor Advertising for the provision of transit bench advertising using the Lexington style benches. Staff bring forward the necessary for council approval, R F P awardings, but the report is extremely well-written and very clear. So thank you for that, Brian. And I guess if we have any questions, they can go through to Brian. Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure that we do, we do own all of the property that they're going to be on. Somebody's already went around, I take it, and made sure that all these benches will be installed on municipal property. They're all adhering to the proper setbacks at their locations, that type of stuff.
Brian, could you answer that, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Counselor LaRose, yes. The locations that the transit bus benches will be installed will be on municipal road lines, town property. Prior to installation, C O A, or Creative Outdoor Advertising, will consult with the Public Works Department about the best location at these locations to place the benches. And, and through that consultation, they'll install them.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Counselor LaRose. Moving on to the referrals, we've got, oh, sorry.
We just mover and seconder and a vote.
Mover, please, for that. We have Counselor LaRose, seconded by Counselor Sanama, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Now to the referrals, we have Church Street Parking, Peel Street Snow Removal and Accessible Transit Options. I'd like to pull accessible transit options and ask for mover on the first two. Mover, seconder? Deputy Mayor and Counselor Rose, all in favor? Thank you. Now on to the accessible transit options. I'm going to need some advice perhaps from our clerk about what options we have with the transit, accessible transit. And I am relating to a letter we received from Community Reach today or yesterday it arrived and looking for advice how I could expedite that discussion and possible decision. And my second question would be, Brian Murray, to let us know if the money that was announced today from the province to us for transit can be, can include that issue. Okay. Stacy?
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Okay, so just for accountability and transparency, I think it's important to let the public know what you're referencing because members of the public haven't had the opportunity to see the request that was received by Community Reach, I believe, today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. So this was a request for funding outside of our normal policy and procedure that went to direct emails to members of council requesting this funding, which is, which is, which is a direct path to them, but again, not following our finance, finance procedure that our treasurer also comment on. The fact that it's on the referral item, it certainly is connected. I completely agree with you in the sense that our Director of Public Works would likely identify Community Reach as a potential option for offering accessible transit because they do offer that and they do offer it in the Town of Midland where the Town of Midland pays for that service, for that door-to-door. So certainly I think that would be a part of that, probably a part of the Director of Public Works report already. And again, he can correct me if I'm wrong. So in this, in this case, procedurally, because we're related to referrals to upcoming staff, it's really only an opportunity for members of council to add an item or maybe adjust an item. So if, say, you wanted to add to this key deliverable specifically how Community Reach could help us or provide this service for us, this would be the opportunity to do that because it falls under referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Whereas their request, we really wouldn't have a lot of flexibility in terms of passing any motions or allowing any funding in this, in this section specifically. Hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Brian, can you add to that?
Certainly, Madam Chair. In terms of the gas tax funding announcement that was just recently sent through to us, I believe, and I guess I'll ask the treasurer to confirm or speak to this, is that I believe that funding is actually earmarked for transit services and certainly accessible transit would be one of those. But it was, it was specifically sent to us for, to offset our costs associated with COVID-19 impacts on transit services. So considering that, I don't know anything about the timelines in terms of the eligibility of the, of using the funds. It's my understanding that it's specifically used to offset our costs associated with the pandemic and the financial implications associated with that.
Thank you, Brian. Carrie, do you have something to add to that?
No, just to confirm, just to confirm what Brian just mentioned. So in reading through the letter that was received today from the ministry, the funds announced under the transit umbrella of the Safe Restart, Safe Restart Agreement. It is to support municipalities in terms of their COVID-related costs and future costs. So any funds that aren't necessarily required in 2020 to offset COVID costs are earmarked and required to be put into a reserve to offset COVID-related costs that may continue to be incurred in 2021.
Thank you very much. So I guess from here, I guess we'll wait for staff report and perhaps section will have a chat in a few weeks about this issue. Good enough?
Well, I think Counselor Levy, that possibility that staff can look at it because it was just received in the last year or so. And we know who well that they passed the July 31st request date. That's when any organizations have to approach or apply to us for any type of funding. So they've certainly passed the date on the request. And I think at the same time, that staff is looking into it that we should possibly be looking for a little more detailed information to exactly how much they do for the Town of Penetang Waseen, what ridership and so forth. And what other organizations have they, that have they approached and been confirmed that they will receive funding from such as Alliance Club of Midland, Penetang Waseen, Rotary, Township of Tiny and Hay. They say that they're going, but there's nothing definite. So I think that we have to do a little more searching and looking into this before we get above board. So with that, we'll leave that to Counselor.
Sorry.
You can see her, okay.
Counselor Clu, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if there's a way we can expedite it though. My knowledge of Trillium applications is that even if they make the deadline of September, it might be a month or two before they hear back. And we, we know that this is a weird year. I know we have a deadline of July 31st, but I, I'm wondering if there's a way we can at least try to get all that information from them as soon as possible and perhaps schedule a special council meeting. I don't want to think about our seniors that can't travel around during this pandemic.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clu. And I think we have to leave this here for tonight and have, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to find my yellow card.
Oh, you could have just put your hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay, so I think, you know, they're saying that the cost of this van is $65,000 and they're applying to Trillium for funding. So again, it would be a good thing to know is how much do they have to fundraise or have in place? And how much would they be applying to Trillium for of that $65,000? So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will commit to finding further details and working with staff to see if we can get some, see if we can expedite this matter and have the appropriate information available. Having said that, I'd ask for a mover for that item to remain on referrals for now. Counselor Sanama and Counselor Clu. All those in favor? Very good, thank you. Any questions from the public and the media? Thank you very much. I had to ask because if I didn't, you'd tell me I had to ask. So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to section B, Recreation Community Services. Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, your worship. 7A, under our consent agenda, we have two items. One is from the Museum Assistance Program for COVID-19. And number two is a memo to council about additional janitorial services. So I'll ask for a mover in a second or first, and then we'll see if there's any questions. Let's move by Counselor Sanama, second by Counselor Vatavonkhar. Is there any questions on this? Just so everybody knows, the first one for the museum, we are applying to the provincial government for a grant for our museum. And if everybody has read the memo, obviously our janitorial services has been increased because our town hall is now back open. And, and I'm sure as finance gets into their thing, it will be included in their costs. So moving down to item B, Matters for Consideration.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we just need to call for the vote.
Did we forget? All in favor of the Matters for Consideration? And that is Carrie, thank you. Is it already Carrie on now, Stace? Item one, we have the 2019 Heritage Tax Rebate Program. As council will recall, this comes to us every year, but because our heritage committee hasn't been able to meet properly and put forth the paperwork, it was deemed that this has been an ongoing thing. So for now, what we're asking of council is just to pre-approve these so that it can go out. We're taking care of our end of the bargain like we usually do. Everything else, tax bills and such are all late. So we would like permission to send out the rebates to those three properties. With that, we'll look for a mover and a seconder. And that is moved by Counselor Levy, second by Counselor Sanama. Do we have any questions on that? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor? And that is carried. Our next one down is our county paramedic post. It's recommended that staff be directed to secure a new agreement with the county of Simco to increase the scope of the paramedic post from a rapid response unit at the town to an ambulance service as outlined in the staff report. So I can see everybody will be jumping for joy when we find out that our old fire hall that's connected to town hall will now be used as an ambulance station. We have a bit of work to do, some repairs to make. But at section, we were quite happy to see this coming to the town and we're asking for permission to proceed. With that, I will ask for a mover and a seconder. And that's moved by Counselor Sanama, seconded by Counselor Vatavonkhar. And if there's any questions. And if there's any questions, seeing none, oh, we do see some. We'll go to Counselor Clu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't say I'm exactly jumping for joy. Obviously, I see the benefit of having paramedic response in our town. I do know we have a great need for storage, including our own vehicles. And so this puts us in an awkward position. I don't find that the leases a huge revenue generation. It certainly provides a service to our town, but I'm wondering if we can possibly provide this agreement to the county and work with them to find a new, more suitable location to store their paramedic equipment as we need our own storage as well.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. I feel that, you know, I know where Counselor Clu is coming from in regards to storage, but I'm sure that within the municipality, it would probably be simpler and easier for us to find additional storage for what we have in there and what is in the existing old fire hall. I agree that it's not a great amount of additional revenue. However, it is the service, the additional added service that the ambulance is going to give the community in the area in particular. And actually, being good people again to our neighboring municipality puts them, the ambulance service, a lot closer to northwest Tiny than they are at the moment. And so I think it's a plus thing and I think that we should maybe work to try and finding storage space other way. You know, we have Public Works Area up there that we could probably find something that we would need or work out and sure Sherry and Brian could work that all out. I would not like to see this not happen.
Is there any other remarks? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a great service to our community. Took a long time to get the county to agree to come and create a post. I know it's an imposition in reference to storage of our own equipment, but I think the whole thing of having a post here far outweighs. It's, you know, we make them respond a lot quicker. It means saving a life, so I think it needs to stay and I fully support having a post there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to that? Seeing none, we will... Do we have a mover and a seconder, Stace? We do. We'll call for the vote, all in favor. And that is carried. Moving down to C, we have referrals to upcoming agendas. We're down to one single item, which is outsourcing day camp. Council has dealt with this. We're waiting for this as a follow-up. Does anybody have any that they would like to add? Seeing none, we'll call for a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Sanama and Counselor Vatibon Khor, all in favor. And that is carried and we'll ask for any questions from the media or public. We don't see any new names up on the bottom, so, Mr. Mayor, it's back to you.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. And with that, we'll move to A, Section C, Planning and Community Development Services. And I would pass it to Deputy Mayor Duba. You're muted, Deputy Mayor.
No, I'm not.
Not now.
Oh, okay, thank you. We have two items on our consent agenda. Yes? Okay. The two items, a memo to Council, the monthly activity report for June from bylaw enforcement, and also memo to Council, the business recovery task force meeting of which we just had one meeting. And the item that was front and center will be dealt with under Matters for Consideration. So if there's no issues with either one of those, I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Sanama, seconded by Counselor Clu. All those in favor? Carrie. Our Matters for Consideration, it's an amendment to our extended use of sidewalk bylaw 2014-35. I will read the recommendation that the proposed amendments to the extended use of sidewalk bylaw in keeping with staff report PL 2020-30, we presented to Council to repeal and replace bylaw 24-2014-35. If I could have a mover, Counselor Clu and Counselor Sanama, discussion on this particular item? Yes, Counselor Sanama?
Just a quick question to something that I noticed and I just needed clarification. The amendment speaks about $5 million of insurance. And then in the risk management, it talks about $2 million. And then in the bylaw 6.6D, it refers to the $2 million and then in the other parts, it refers to the $5 million. I'm assuming it's the $5 million supposed to be throughout, but if we could get clarification on, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Sanama. I will ask our Director Andrea Betty to answer that question if she can.
Certainly, Deputy Mayor, thank you. And thanks to Counselor Sanama. In a typo and error, it should all be $5 million that's listed throughout the document itself. That's the new standard that's been established. So I do apologize for those mistakes, but they will be corrected.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Sanama, for bringing that to our attention. Are there further comments? I think it was widely was accepted and as all of us know, there are a few outdoor patios on our main street, which is great to see. If there's no further comments or questions, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Okay. I think it did pass. People were a little slow to bring up their cards. Thank you. Onto referrals. We have at the Planning and Community Development Services Section, endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. One is the vacant municipal property inventory update, our graffiti policy, and review of our signed bylaw regarding hate symbols and hate speech. Is there anything to add to our referral items? I don't think we're in a position to delete anything, so if I could have a mover and a seconder, to move by Counselor LaRose, seconded by Counselor Clu. Is that okay? Good. All right, all those in favor? Thank you, Council. And I guess, as Spin mentioned, we have no media or public, so Your Worship, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And with nine, Section D, I will pass it to Counselor Vatibon Khor.
Thank you, Worship. Good evening again, members of council. So under your consent agenda for Finance and Corporate Services, we have one report and that has to do with an award of an RFP for the North Simcoe Municipal Services Review, Phase One. And this is joint undertaking by the North Simcoe municipalities. The report is in your agenda. If there are any questions, I'm sure the CAO would be prepared to respond. Any questions on the report? Seeing none, may I have a mover, please, for the consent agenda item? So at Counselor LaRose and seconded by Counselor Sanama, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion's carried, thank you. Moving on to the Matters for Consideration, we have one item and that is pertaining to a request for refreshment vehicle license at the Rotary Champlain-Wendat Park. And the recommendation is that staff be directed to prepare a license agreement with Clarence Moro for the operation of a refreshment vehicle in the Rotary Champlain-Wendat Park for consideration. Reports in your agenda was prepared by our clerk. If there's any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer them. Any questions on this particular matter? Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor and then Mayor Lu Ru. Madam Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would refer this, I guess, to Sherry. I saw the monthly cost to Mr. Moro and I just wondered if that would be prorated since it's so late in the season. If he is going to get his vehicle there within a very short period of time, summer is, although we'd like to think it's coming on nicely, winter is going to be here before we know it. So I wonder if Sherry could speak to that.
Thank you, Counselor Deputy Mayor. I'm having some internet problems. I hope everyone can hear me okay. Actually, I'm going to defer to our clerk because she's had the most recent conversations with Mr. Moro about the agreement.
Yeah, that's fine, absolutely. So I guess the reality is that once you have a refreshment vehicle license, it's a yearly fee, but not a January to January thing, I won't believe. And Andrea, I actually might interrupt me if I'm wrong. It's done based on a yearly basis and the fee is $250 for a license fee. What Mr. Moro was suggesting in his email was what he felt that he would like to pay. So as far as I know, a license fee is a license fee, just like, and the same as a fire permit. If you bought a fire permit, again, we're not charging for them right now, but if you bought a fire permit in August of 2020, and in a normal circumstance, it would get you to the end of the year. I just don't know if the license agreement starts the minute you sign the license agreement or if it is a yearly basis. Either way, the chances are that the $150 plus the electricity fee would remain the same.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Deputy Mayor, before I go to the mayor, was there a supplementary there or...?
Well, yes, I guess just clarification, perhaps it's in the report and I missed it, but there is no monthly fee then. He just pays for the electricity that he uses and the permit, correct?
That's right. Our refreshment vehicle license is just a yearly fee. And then the cost that we would have to attribute is usually to do with the electricity being used. But again, this report was very high level because we don't actually have those details worked out yet. So you might see in the next update report additional costs for electricity. You might see additional costs for setup in a certain location. You might see it change a little bit depending upon what the refreshment vehicle owner wants. And so because we don't have that information yet, it was just more of a chance for community to behold to let us know whether they're interested in all for us to actually proceed with this to be considered at a future date with all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Your Worship, you had a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Vatibon Khor. I'm actually very pleased to see that Mr. Moro has agreed to install his refreshment vehicle in our Waterflyn Park. I think it's going to be an asset and great for the community and the people. We have so many people down around that splash pad area that are always wandering around and I think it's a great move. I can honestly say that Mr. Moro would probably be very happy with the circumstance, monetary circumstances are because when he originally was looking at setting up, he came nice and nicely and, and, and he was willing to pay quite a substantial amount for a month. So now that it's coming out this way, I think it's a win-win both ways.
Thank you, Worship. So I'll read the recommendation and then look for a mover and a seconder. Let staff be directed to prepare a license agreement with Clarence Moro for the operation of a refreshment vehicle in Rotary Champlain-Wendat Park for Council consideration. May I have a mover, please? Counselor LaRose, a seconder. Counselor Sanama, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So moving down on the agenda, we have referrals. And as was mentioned earlier, we had the one referral from the council meeting agenda and that was an email from the Penetang Machine Kings requesting some assistance from the municipality as a result of the impacts of COVID. And it was suggested that perhaps we could add that to the referrals list. We have existing referrals. Read the recommendation that the Finance and Corporate Services endorse the following additional existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. The first one is the Roni Airport Commission Joint Business Operation Review. The second is the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, options and planning for joining the coalition. Both of those are expected in Q3 2020. The review of the SONG designation, and that's due in Q4 2020. Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's Initiative Membership, and that's due in Q4 2020. So the addition would be the letter from the Penetang Machine Kings. And I see our CAO's hand go up, so I believe he wants to make a comment. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment on the first item, the Roni Airport matter. Council will see that it's identified as Q3 2020 and was updated once. Q3, next month is the end of Q3. And so this is a joint report coming from the three CAOs of the three municipalities that are part of the ownership group. So I will endeavor to get some updated timing at the next meeting, but I don't expect it to be a Q3 item. We are working towards a joint report and a joint consultation with the three councils. I will also reach out to our report rep, Counselor LaRose, and have some conversation with him and be in a better position next meeting with appropriate timing. So I just wanted to provide that update for Council. I don't think anything's needed of Council right now unless, of course, there's significant opposition to my comments, but hopefully Council understands it is a joint process with two other municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Any questions of the CAO on that matter? Okay, seeing none, I have a question for the clerk with respect to the Penetang Machine Kings email. Do we need a motion to add that or is that just done and then we vote on the list as amended?
We do need a motion to add the item and it's important that we clearly state the key deliverables so Council understands what they're voting on in order to add that to the future agenda items. So I do have the Penetang Machine Kings Assistance Request. I haven't read that specific letter, so just to get specifics for key deliverables would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. I would just, it's being referred to staff for review and recommendation back to Council on their request.
Okay. And then, yeah, it would need its own vote and then we would vote on them as a group.
And does it require a timeline at this point or does that staff assign a timeline?
I believe staff assigns the timeline in consultation with the CAO. But certainly if Council's requesting a certain date, then they can make that clear to the CAO as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So you've heard the recommendation. Is there a mover to add it to the referral list? Counselor Levy, a seconder, Counselor Sanama. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Thank you, the motion carries. And then you've heard the recommendation, so it would be that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorse the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Any discussion on that? No, may I have a mover, please? Counselor Sanama, a seconder, Counselor Levy, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Questions from the media and public? We have none, so Your Worship, I'm just going to turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Great meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Everyone have a rest of a great evening and stay healthy and stay safe. Good night.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.